June 20, 2024.
I call the Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present Zion Hickman, Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Ciara and Sherick Chair. Are we starting with you, Ms. DeShawn?
Excuse me?
Do we start with you?
You need to make this announcement. It says after calling your committee to order.
All right. I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined in Bussara City Rules of Procedure Section B entitled Council Participation pertaining to subsection eight being that the agenda and packets for council and committee meetings must be posted to documents on demand at least 24 hours prior to any meeting. At this time, I need a first and a second.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Shireman, a second by Mr. Moritz. Now we need a roll call, a roll call voice vote. Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Me? I mean Hickman? Sherick? Yes. Okay, so motion passes. Okay, so the council rules and procedures are being suspended because the rules of the city council rules of procedure are being suspended as listed above due to a clerical error. The clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20, 2024 committee packet to the documents on demand 24 hours in advance of the regularly scheduled committee meetings. This procedure is being done to ensure transparency of the error and to continue with the meeting as scheduled. All right, so now we move on to the agenda. Do we have any public participation for public lands and buildings? Ms. Shireman?
Madam Chair, at our June 6 regular meeting, the mayor had asked the committee to do a tour of the facility, the fire department, before we made a decision. We tabled the matter until all members of the council toured the fire station. My question for you as the chair is have you scheduled a time and date to have this tour?
I have not toured the actual inside of the building. I did go and check out the outside and look in the windows.
Right, but did you schedule for all of council?
No, individual members had done so. I know Mr. Moritz.
I haven't done so. I thought we were doing it all as a council.
Yeah, we were trying not to have us all in one spot because of Sunshine laws and not wanting people to think that we're doing anything secretive.
So then who do we contact to do a tour?
The city service safety director.
Tommy?
Tommy.
All right, thank you.
Have you had a chance to go through?
Not yet.
Okay, so Mr. Hickman has not been able to go through it yet either, but you did make yours.
I did make it in here.
And Mrs. DeShawn hasn't either. So, all right. Do we have any other public participation? All right, so next on the agenda would be approval of minutes for the June 6, 2024 regularly public, regular public lands and buildings committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
I have a motion for Mr. Moritz and a second for Ms. Shireman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, so next was the selling of the North Fire Station, and I see that we do need to have a few more people check it out and get an idea. I know we had an amount out there that had come to us the last time of almost $300,000 or right around. Do we want to go ahead and do anything about that prior to going to looking, like having them go ahead and see if they can get, go up for bids or?
I'd like to look at it first.
All right, so hopefully at the next meeting, we'll all be prepared for that. So moving on, the city owned lots, did anybody go and check out the city owned lots behind and beside Wendy's?
Through my vehicle right through it.
Me too. I liked the fact that it was no longer blockaded. Mr. Gerner, would we just need to go ahead and have them look for bids for those or how, what did they think would be the best policy for this, whether it's the CIC or the bidding?
Right, so if you were going to pick this up, I assume that we would want to put a reserve on that.
Yes.
Based upon what the appraised value was. But, you know, those are two separate lots. They could be sold into several lots, but the pool of potential purchasers is fairly small, so it may be a situation where you transfer them to the CIC and then we attempt to negotiate with Claydeys, Pisannellis, Wendy's, and see if they show any interest. And if all of them say that they have no interest, then you could try to sell them at, you know, public bidding process, but I mean, you could go either way.
I was thinking one of those lines from what we did before with, probably like that.
Well, you could, I mean, I suppose you could send out letters of solicitation asking, you know, Claydeys and Wendy's and Pisannellis if they have any interest, and then if they have no interest, then there's no reason to put it in the CIC in the first place.
What would you guys like to do? Would you like to send out some feeler letters?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need a motion to have that done or just request that we send out some feeler letters and get an idea? All right, so it looks like we can go ahead and send out some feeler letters, get an idea as to whether or not anybody's interested that's connected first. Next up would be the wavelength contract. Do you have further information about that or do you have more that you have to look into prior?
So, I mean, by and large, I, we're still looking into IT professionals, not just the wavelength issue, but I think that we've sort of piecemealed together our IT services for the past several years without a overall comprehensive plan. So we did meet with COSI, and I, I think that I can probably say that their price point was a little bit higher than what we anticipated and were comfortable with. So we're looking at other internet provider, not internet, but other information technology providers that could, and basically, you know, modernize, make sure that all of the city owned computers have up to date virus protections, that we're, our firewall, whatever that exactly is, is up to date. Our servers are meeting all of the regulations that, you know, obviously, because we take online payments and things, there are different rules that we have to follow up, so making sure that our systems across the board are all up to date. So we have reached out and to secondary providers to see what we can get from them. I did get a letter back from the Ohio Ethics Commission on Wavelength, and they basically said that they will not provide an opinion on a current ongoing matter, and they won't provide me an opinion on Mr. Fankhauser's ethics issues, but they referred me to 2019 opinion, basically saying that the analysis that they presented in 2019 would still be consistent with what we're looking at here. And so I think one of the most important parts for the city, not based upon the wavelength, but based upon just all of the information in general, is to get a company in here to provide, you know, the security purposes, because right now, we don't really have any of that. I mean, we have, we contract with a guy and we have systems in place, and the auditor has some systems in the fire, or the police department, but we need a more comprehensive plan, and we also need not to think about it once every 20 years. I mean, it's one of those things where we need to stay on top of. And so that's sort of where we're at as far as trying to figure out our IT stuff and making sure we're compliant with all of the applicable federal regulations and state regulations.
So it's still a process?
Yes, we said. Yes, it's in progress, but it's not. We are doing things.
Right, it's not just standing still. That's good.
We did not anticipate COSI's price point to be as high as it was, but, but it's understandable because we have probably ignored this for far too long.
Yeah, okay.
And that stuff changes rapidly. I don't know if you knew, but...
Oh, yeah, very rapidly.
Right.
Okay, so we're just waiting for more information as you gather it. Okay, I know we received a letter about the pool slide.
Mm-hmm.
Did you want to touch on that too, or?
I think this is Tommy's daily.
Come on down.
It's a really nice slide.
It is.
Tommy's Starner Service Safety Director. So I was asked what the pool slide over on Crestline was going for. I said, I have no idea. I went over there, I just happened to be driving through Crestline, I went over there and took a picture of it. As you guys see, I have three of them in there, and I emailed Corey, the Service Safety Director over there, and you guys saw his response, they want a fair market value for it. I looked up on the internet what a new one was, because there is, obviously, there's, not obviously, at this point in time, there's no used ones online, so a brand new one of those, about that same size, is about $32,000. So I don't know what their fair market value is, it's four years old, and as Kevin just brought up to me, that we may or may not get it permitted. So I'm not saying that we should buy it or not buy it, I'm just stating everything I know, so.
Saying that we should maybe look into it further?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Starner, I have a list of questions for you.
Okay.
Please. What will happen to the old one?
That depends on what we decide as a group. I mean, I, it may not, may stay there and put it somewhere else if we can fit it. I don't, I have no idea.
Okay, and will there have to be any new construction done to the existing slide area?
I would imagine. There is a water line there already. The water line for this slide that I looked at was six inches, and I don't think ours on that, on the one that's there, is six inch water line. I think it's smaller than that.
And what would the cost be to fix that?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I didn't look into that.
Okay, would this require a new health inspection?
Yes, it would.
So the old health inspection dies once the old one is gone, right?
My guess is, is we would, if, if we would do this, we would do this in the wintertime, and when the health, and we would get it permitted the correct way, providing the state permits it, the health inspector would come in in the spring like they do every year and inspect it at that time.
Okay, would the, would the new slide increase the price of the insurance that's covering the old slide?
I would guess it would, but I have no idea. This is the first slide deal I've ever done.
Right, so I'm, well, I'm just trying to compare costs to then, to, you know, what if.
Yeah.
And then, what would be the total estimated cost, estimated to buy, bring here, set up, cost wise?
If we go on fair market value, I would guess around 75.
Okay, can you estimate a total cost from start to finish, including change in insurance, health department requirements, and cost of new materials?
No, I mean, I don't, I can estimate around, maybe around 100.
Yeah, be more than the 75.
Yeah, I would guess around 100.
Okay, and the final question, Mr. Starner?
Yes, ma'am.
What is wrong with the current slide and what would be the cost to get it working?
There's nothing wrong with it, it works.
Well, then why do, why do we need a new slide?
I don't know, we don't need a new slide, as far as I'm concerned. I just was asked to look into it, so I looked into it, so.
Well, you just answered a lot of questions, because I thought that there was something wrong with the old slide.
There's not a thing wrong with it, we use it every day, we send two kids up at a time so they can go their different directions and come back down.
Right. Okay, well then, thanks, I got my answers.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy.
Yep, no problem.
All right, so that's one of those things that we'd have to have more information on. Do we have any other open projects that we'd like to talk about tonight?
No, not for me.
Do we have any more public participation?
Madam Chair? Yes. Am I allowed to speak during public participation? It has to do with the slide for the pool?
Of course you are, you're public tonight.
Thank you. I have received some email communications from Jeff Dunn, our service foreman, and he has indicated some areas that possibly we should be looking at in spending of funds versus spending them right now on a slide for the pool. He sent me pictures of, what are they called here? Let's see. Well, he said these, oh, PlayScape Border. These were bought in 2018 and 2019 for the playground equipment. No mulch was available to put in them due to, due to not enough funding to buy it. He feels that's something that we should be looking at spending resources on. The baby pool is not in operation, it needs a pump and motor upgrade, and engineering needs done for it. And also, there's no funding right now for the art park. In the art park, he mentions it is in need of a roof, a ramp, and any canvas damage repaired. And I think, because I know Kevin was included in these emails, I think that's, I'm reading what he indicated. And again, his thoughts are if we have funds to purchase the pool slide, maybe we should think about these other areas that, you know, funds could be used for, and I just indicated that I would bring those up to the committee.
Ms. Shireman?
Madam Chair, there's a lot of questions on Facebook too, on when are they going to get the baby pool running, because it's not working out there, and they have babies that want to swim too, so there's part of the pool that's not doing anything for anybody. I agree, fix the baby pool.
Okay, all right, do we have any other public participation?
I got one other comment to make, as long as we're on this thing from Jeff. Also, I know a concern that we had would be to make the splash pool more economic for the city to run, because all that water goes in there, gets dumped right back down the drain. It's wasted chemical treated water, it could be actually recycled, reused in the pool, and make a loop of some kind, something like that, that could be something to look into. I think a number was kicked around, that was like $30,000 to do anything at one time. I remember right on the numbers that we were talking about at one time.
I believe that was the original design for it, was the water was supposed to recirculate.
Didn't happen, yeah. That's all I have.
Anything else? All right, I am going to adjourn the meeting at 6:19 PM.
Economic Development Committee, Thursday, June 6, 2024. I call the Economic Development Committee meeting to order at 6:21 PM. Members present are Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz, myself, Vicky DeShawn Chair, absent Zion Hickman. First, we'll start with a little announcement. I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined in Bussara City Council Rules of Procedure Section B entitled Council Participation pertaining to subsection eight being that the agenda and packets for council and committee meetings must be posted to documents on demand at least 24 hours prior to any meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion by Mr. Moritz, second by Ms. Shireman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Oh goodness, didn't want to do that, I apologize. I need to do a roll call. All right, Christopher Moritz?
Yes.
Ms. Shireman?
Yes.
Vicky DeShawn? So it's passed, correct? And the reason why we are suspending, why the council rules of procedure are being suspended, and we're doing this to have it referred in each one of the committee minutes of each committee. The rules of the Bussara City Rules of Procedure, the rules of the Bussara City Council Rules of Procedure are being suspended as listed above due to a clerical error. The clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20, 2024 committee packet to documents on demand 24 hours in advance of the regularly scheduled committee meetings. This procedure is being done to ensure transparency of the error and to continue with the meeting as scheduled. So first, do we have any public participation?
I had a question for Mr. Zion, but he left. Can I say it anyway? Am I concerned?
Sure, and then we'll pass it on to Mr. Hickman.
Okay, my question was, since Zion is finding difficulties in meeting with Mr. Zach, and it's been a few months since Jed has been brought up to council, I'm wondering if we shouldn't introduce the fact of taking it off of open projects?
In response to that, Ms. Shireman, a couple, or maybe it was even at the last committee meeting, if not the last, the one previous, I had questioned if that should be removed, and Mr. Hickman indicated that he would like it kept on the open project list because he is in the process of setting up a meeting with Mr. Zach. So as far as I'm concerned, I would like it to stay on, and let's give, you know, Mr. Hickman, you know, a couple more weeks to see if he could get a, a time range to meet with Mr. Zach and to discuss. That's, you know, my thoughts.
Well, I would go for a couple more weeks, but if it's any longer than that, than I need it. I think it needs to be taken off, because it's not gone any farther than it has when it was first brought up.
Chris, do you, or Mr. Moritz, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, this time, no. I mean, give Mr. Hickman a chance here to see what he can do.
Sure, okay, great. Approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the May 23, 2024 regular Economic Development Committee meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve June 6, 2024 regular Economic Development Committee meetings?
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Moritz, a second by Ms. Shireman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Next, open project.
I would just discuss the one.
Or wait a minute, I'm looking at the wrong thing here, yeah, open projects. Nothing to discuss? Public participation again? I'm seeing no one. I adjourn the Economic Development Committee meeting at 6:25 PM, Thursday, June 6, 2024.
Service committee meeting called to order at 6:27.
Seven.
Members present, Ciara and Sherick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, absent, I myself, Chair Chris Moritz. At this time, I'd look for any public participa-- oh, I go do this first, don't I? Okay, flying right down through there. Need to make a, I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined in Bussara City Council Rules of Procedures, Section B entitled Council Participation.
I'll make a motion.
Second. First by Ciara and Sherick, second by Kevin Myers. Need a roll call. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Yes for me too. So motion passes. Rules of Bussara City Council Rules of Procedures are being suspended as listed above due to clerical error. The clerk of, clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20, 2024 committee packet and documents on demand 24 hours in advance of the regularly scheduled committee meeting. The procedure is being done to ensure transparency of error and to continue with the meeting as scheduled. Thank you. Any public participation at this time?
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I was concerned about the, the rough draft because certain section has not been added into there, and that has to do with, hang on, reference code 915.04, the utility deposits. That wasn't part of this draft. So that, don't know if that was intentionally left out, left out for a reason, hasn't been looked at or whatever, but I think that's an important part because this is part of all of that section that has to be in there to actually discuss.
Page five, talks about utility deposits, about a third of the way down, utility deposits for payment of charges, tenant and property owners. They don't actually have the code section, but they have it in bold lettering.
Yeah, I saw that, but I didn't know.
I think that was notes to me to change that in the 915.04.
So the only thing about that section that I think still needs to be looked at and brought to the attention to this committee is that, excuse me, tenant, it says in here, tenants and property owners remain jointly responsible for payments. I think that a tenant should be responsible for their own water bill when they sign up. I don't think property owner should be that unless it's in their lease that the property owner pays for the water as part of the lease agreement. It's just like any other utility that anybody gets, electric, gas, cable TV, internet service or whatever, that's the responsibility of the responsible party and not of the property owner. He does not do that. So why are we not separating this? I mean, I understand the House bill is still sitting in committee, but why should we have to wait for that?
Can I respond to it?
Yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, so I brought up that question several years ago when Mr. Ratliff was still here. One of the answers I was given was, we do that because we can. And that's the wrong answer.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Just because we can, to me, doesn't make it right. And you bring up a valid point. If I'm renting from you and I decide I don't want to pay my AT&amp;T cell phone bill, how the hell is that your problem? The water should be no different.
That's true.
You know, that's the cost of doing business. If, and again, if we as a city say, well, we might lose out on X amount of dollars because this, then raise, raise everybody's rates to cover the, whatever loss you're going to have. That's, that's how you do business. If you're, if you're AT&amp;T selling cell phone services to somebody and 10% of your people aren't paying their bills, by God, you got to raise your rates on everybody to cover that.
Raise their deposits more.
Correct, so.
Don't raise the rates, but raise the deposits.
So your point, in my opinion, your points are very valid and absolutely spot on.
Okay, the other section that I question too is section 1131.16, ideas with underground utilities. It specifically states electric, fiber optics, gas, and telephone service. I think there, it should state electrical, fiber optics, gas, telephone service, and any other buried cable within the right of way.
The public right of way.
Okay, that way someone cannot find a loophole in our codified ordinance, okay, to say, well, we're not-- we're not one of these people, okay? And we don't have good accord or anything like that. I think it should state any other buried cable or conduit or whatever. That way, that would basically cover that, no, you can't bury it unless we approve. Because I think if you add that extra verbiage in there, I think it covers the city a little bit more because someone will find a loophole in something.
If I may, again, isn't that what they put on your job description at work and any other duties?
That's right.
Just to cover everything else?
To cover everything else. And that's all I'm saying, is that would cover the liability of the city for someone trying to find a loophole in our codified ordinance. That will cover anything buried in right of way or near the sewers, sanitaries, or whatever. Thank you.
Massey? Previously, we had been given, and I'm not on the committee.
Right.
But we'd been given a copy of what was called Title IX, Busaras Codified Ordinances Proposed Changes. And that started out with Section 903.02, and then went all the way through to 1143.09. Now, the last time we talked about Title IX, or back on May 23, I had talked with Mr. Dunn, the mayor, Service Safety Director, and Landon Hill about this Title IX. And it was decided because there were still areas in the document that we had been provided that stated, you know, Brian needs to check into this, does Landon use this, the mayor needs to look at. That it was decided that the matter would be put on hold until an updated draft had been prepared and viewed by the initial committee of the administration, Dunn, et cetera. In other words, get those answers questioned, redo another one of these. Well, I'm seeing that what we have in front of us here, what you have in front of you, we're missing quite a few of these sections that were in this Title IX. And I did check with Mr. Dunn today and ask him if a meeting was held of the administration, again, including Brian, Mr. Hill, to go over the original and get answers to those questions. And Mr. Dunn said he was not invited to a meeting, if a meeting was in fact held. So it would appear that definitely we're missing a lot of sections.
914 is one that we're missing, 914.
Excuse me?
914 is one of the sections missing, although.
914?
Mm-hmm.
914.01, Extension Procedures.
Oh, that's missing, although plus I think.
Well, here, it's in the main packets of the bunch of, but there's.
Oh, yeah.
That's still, that's still in this.
Shocks.
Correct.
But it's not in what was presented tonight for you to look over, the drafts.
And so I think, I don't know that what you have.
You know, I think, are we getting Title IX and Chapter IX?
It's, oh, it's Chapter 900, under Part 1, 2, and 3 of Title IX, street sewers.
And what you've presented are changes to Chapter IX.
Ohioir Vice Code requires, says that you can only have one topic per piece of legislation. And so, in my mind, logistically, procedurally, each chapter is going to be its own little thing. So Chapter 913 and Chapter, I think you have 903.
903.
Are the two, the first two that I have completed. I haven't gone all the way through. So I went through 914, and there's something that we'll have to sit down and talk about because that's talking about extending water lines into developments, and then, once we start branching off of those developments before the city can allow somebody to hook up into that water line that a developer paid to get out there, we have to ensure that the developer has been remunerated for the amount that they expended. And then after 10 years, well, we no longer care that the developer gets remunerated, the city gets remunerated. But we don't really have costs to be paid back. So I'm not sure the legality or if that process is as streamlined as it should be, or if we really need some of that remuneration language. So that one's still a work in progress. But just in order, so I was preparing those, I didn't know she was providing those to you, I was just sending those.
Right.
But that was sort of, just so that we could begin with this committee talking about what was in this chunk of stuff.
Yes.
I've been through it and could, you know, answer questions at this point. But it's not all, all of the draft legislation, which is going to be like, I don't know, eight pieces, is not yet complete.
Are you wanting to do all eight of them and then have us go over them, or you want to do them one at a time?
That's up to you guys. The two that you have in front of you, I think those are a final draft subject to revision. Like 914, I didn't send to you guys, but I have research to do, so I'm not sure.
Gotcha.
No, 912, I don't know what it was. Going about extending water lines and paying back developers.
We've just been handed these, so probably need some time to go over and look at it.
Yeah, and my question, if I could direct it to the administration, have you guys looked over these and are you okay with them? And have you had, like Mr. Dunn and your other department heads for sewers and water, take a look at it? Could we request that you all look at these and let us know at our next meeting if we're cool to proceed with this, or if you see anything? Because the last thing we want to do, I think, is make changes and then, oh, well, that's not going to work for so and so.
I'll compare what we did and what that says.
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Any more, let's see, Title IX, anything else on Title IX we're talking about right now? I think we pretty much covered that. Open projects, any open projects anybody wants to talk about right now?
Yes.
Seeing none. Any public participation, again? Seeing none, going to adjourn at?
6:40.
6:40.
Health and Safety Committee Meeting, Thursday, June 20, 2024. I call the Health and Safety Committee Meeting to order at 6:42 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Scherick, James, me, and myself, Vicky DeShawn, Chair. First off, I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined in Busaras City Council Rules of Procedure, Section B, entitled "Council Participation", pertaining to subsection eight, being that the agenda and packets for council and committee meetings must be posted to documents on demand at least 24 hours prior to any meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Scherick, second by Mr. Me. Roll call. Scherick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn? Yes. Motion passes. And the reason that the council rules of procedure are being suspended, the rules of the Busaras City Council Rules of Procedure are being suspended as listed above due to a clerical error. The clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20, 2024 Committee Packet to Documents on Demand 24 hours in advance of the regularly scheduled committee meetings. This procedure is being done to ensure transparency of the error and to continue with the meeting as scheduled. First, do we have public participation? Or we do have public participation? Seeing no one, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 6, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee Meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular Health and Safety Committee Meeting from June 6, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Scherick, second by Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we, on the agenda, we have our TRAP neuter return. And I spoke with Ms. Lewis, and she does have some possible changes to the draft ordinance that was prepared by the law director. So I'm asking for her to come first and give us her thoughts, and then we'll have a committee talk.
First off, Darla Lewis, representing the Crawford County TRAP Neuter Return Program. First off, I really want to thank this committee for getting on this so quickly and diligently. I just really appreciate it. I was rather shocked when I got this draft. So it was great. So on the draft that I got, there is just a couple of changes, and that's that, that there are, under the 505.031, there are some that say TRAP, spay, neuter, vaccinate, ear tip, and release. And the release has to be return.
Okay.
So there's a few of them in that paragraph there, in that whole section, that return just has, release needs to just be changed to return. And other than that, on this, I didn't see anything else. But I did, you guys are just not going to probably like me, I did pull off a current Baltimore, Maryland Feral Cat Program ordinance. And there is quite a few of additions on this that I would like to have added. And just basically, it explains what an ear tip is. When we get ready to spay and neuter, the veterinarians take off about a fourth of their ear, and then that way, those cats are now recognized as already being spayed and neutered. And I just think that's important because some people would not know, you know, that, okay, they might come across a cat, and they might trap it on their own or something, and all of a sudden, it's got a piece of its left ear missing, and, you know, they would not know if it's not in here. So that's part of it. And then, really, basically, I did not see this in here, but under the owner part, I don't know if we had in there, I didn't see it anyways, that a feral cat caregiver is not considered the owner of the cat. And then TRAP neuter and return is considered a non-lethal approach. And.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
I may interrupt you for a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you identify what section you're looking at when you refer to the feral?
I don't know what section he'll put it in.
Do you have your, in front of you?
I do.
I mean, are you talking about the draft that we gave you?
Yes.
So like.
But the additions are, I'm kind of.
Oh, those, what you're talking about are the additions that.
Yes, Mr. Gurnard.
So it would be easy enough in the definition section of 505.02 to add in what ear tipping means. I agree, we can change, be consistent. So I can't remember, but release should, okay, so it should be returned throughout 505.031. And then, so when we define feral cat giver, it talks about has temporary custody, which is different than, down below that, owner means any person, firm, association owning, harboring, or keeping. And I guess you could put a caveat in there, other, you know, something, I'm thinking a lot, but besides a feral cat giver, which denotes that those are two separate things. In the abandonment section, which I think is what Baltimore was looking at in part of their.
Right.
Code was, well, we don't want these feral cat givers to be charged with abandoning an animal when they're returning them.
Exactly.
And so in the abandoning cat, we make clear that a feral cat giver is freely able to release that cat once it's been talked or taken care of and it's not deserted.
Derek, go ahead.
So I think we can fix the definition of animal owner and/or feral cat to include that, you know, a feral cat giver is not the actual owner of that cat, which would take care of those first three things that you had talked about, which I understand, and those would be doable.
There was only one other thing. And what it says is, feeding or otherwise caring for a feral cat with an ear tip in accordance with the county TNR program guidelines shall not be deemed as a nuisance condition unless it is detrimental to the public's health, safety, welfare, or the environment. I don't know if you want, I'm just asking you to, you know.
That's Baltimore that you're referencing.
Right.
Yes.
So I don't know if some of the things that I've asked for, if you can include them or not, I'm not going to fuss if you can't.
No, the first three things that you talked about are very simple and important fixes.
Right.
And after the meeting, I'll get a copy of your revised.
I'll just give them to you.
And we can look at including that, because I know part of the issue is the releasing of feral cats. I don't think, and I read this whole thing, but I can't remember, but I don't think Busaras outlaw is feeding feral cats, which I think Baltimore might, which is why they're basically saying if you're feeding an ear tipped cat, it's not considered creating a nuisance. Because some cities do have ordinances basically outlawing any public feeding or putting pans of food on your porch.
Right.
But we never passed anything to that effect. So I think that's the way Baltimore was using to get around, you know, working on the feral cat problem. And there's one thing about, one part about exacerbating the problem by, you know, feeding them and attracting them and doing all of this stuff. And then there's the other part where you're feeding them and doing the things, but you're also responsibly trying to approach the problem by mitigating their productivity?
Yeah.
Whatever the word.
I know. There really is, there's some over here that don't like you to feed them, there's some over here that say, well, they'll starve if you don't. Feral cats do hunt.
Yes.
So, you know.
You know, can I speak, please, whoever the chair is?
It's just me.
Sure.
Okay.
Carolyn, if we could have you come up to the podium, please.
Okay. You know, that's funny that you said, Mr. Gurnard, about you don't think Busaras has a thing where you can't feed the cats, the feral cats? There's a lady down where I live that is going through this right now through management. They're telling her that she's not allowed to feed the cats.
And they might have apartment complex rules and things to that effect, but citywide, we don't have an ordinance that says I'll give you a ticket.
Wouldn't it have to state it in their lease that they're not allowed to feed the feral cat?
Well, that would be a question for a tenant landlord lawyer, but it seems like you might be on to something.
Exactly. I mean.
I can't enforce things that I don't have in your contract.
So if you don't feed the feral cat that comes up to your house, what are you saying, go die, little kitty?
As Ms. Lewis stated, there's a.
Yeah, there's your pros and cons, right?
There's a camp of people that indicate that these feral cats are self-sufficient on their own and will go find food. But then there's the theory where, you know, the basically collapse theory, if we stop feeding them here, or we chase them off, other feral cats will come in and/or they will just go to your next door neighbor and keep doing.
Exactly.
So it's, this is an approach that takes into account the fact that you can't stop it just by feeding and those types of things.
The whole thing of it is, is, you know, and we're talking, thank you, Carolyn, we are talking about feral.
Yeah.
Okay? A lot of the population of cats that are out there.
For now.
Are strays.
Oh, for sure.
They have been abandoned, they've been thrown out of the house. Yeah, a lot, a lot.
Educate me real quick, the difference in a nutshell between stray and feral?
Strays are friendly. You can approach them, they will let you pet them, you can't get near a feral cat.
Okay.
They will not let you.
So it's more on their behavior?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And so, yeah, with that. And so, yeah, with that being said, they still, you know, there are still people out there that are saying, don't feed them. Well, a lot of people feed the strays. In fact, you will not see a feral cat anywhere near a food bowl, except if you leave that food bowl out late at night, because feral cats only come out in the dark. You'll see stray cats all over the place, but ferals only come out at the dark.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Could we request the changes be brought back before us at our next meeting to potentially enact this?
Yeah.
And I do have some changes, they're just, like we refer to the Crawford County Humane Society Shelter, you know, it has a different name than that, but they're just minor changes, and I don't need to go over those through committee, I can just pass those on to the law director. And yes, that would, is that fine with the committee if the law director revises the draft?
Yes, please.
Does anybody have anything to say about the draft that we have in front of us at this time? Questions, comments, concerns?
I was looking at 505.13.
You want to delete some of the animals that are prohibited in town?
I really think that that's a little above and beyond. I mean, even if they just...
Bears.
Well, even if they just said, you know, if you have certain animals that were on this list and list those to get them tagged, you know, so people know that you have it. That way, if your snake is found two blocks from your house, but we have a lot of people in town that have animals on this list that don't even realize that they're not legal. There's a lot of snakes in town, there's people with raccoons.
But I don't think snakes per se are poisonous.
Constrictor snakes, listed.
Constrictors.
That's everybody who has a python or a boa. I had a friend who used to have a miniature pot-bellied pig because he's allergic to other animals. Like, it didn't hurt anybody to have a miniature pot-bellied pig. I could understand, you know, if your landlord didn't want you to have a pet, but if you own your house, and it's the size of a dog.
I'm sorry, I did have one more thing.
Sure.
On the first page, where it lists everything, it doesn't have the 505.031 on, listed on that list.
505.13.
No, that's what...
She's talking about the new section that I created.
031. And I just thought that that probably ought to be on there.
It should be.
And that's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions?
Oh, and number 34 on that list actually literally says, any other dangerous animal.
So we can just make it one?
Instead of any animal that was deemed dangerous.
Any animal that's declared protected or endangered, and any other dangerous.
Yeah.
So, once again, thank you so much. I mean, this just, to have you guys recognize my organization now means a lot. It really does. And, you know, we're moving ahead. I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but I was approached, I have a meeting on Tuesday, and I was approached about, approaching you guys about some type of a shelter that would be at no cost, and we're thinking about doing a food pantry for the dogs and cats and things like that. So I don't know if that's a thing to bring up now or not, I'm sorry. But, and I don't even know if there is a place.
I know that the Humane Society, when they get massive amounts, give stuff out, that might actually be a group to go to and see if they wouldn't mind wanting, like, to have a space specifically separate.
I wish I could. The Humane Society wants nothing to do with my program. And I'm sorry about that. She really doesn't want anything to do with my program, I don't know why, because she was the first person that I approached, Victoria, because all other TNRs usually always have a Humane Society associated with them. And Victoria pretty much let me know that she's not interested in TNR at this time.
Is there a staffing issue for them, or...
I don't know, I didn't ask. I mean, you know, I'm not going to...
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not going to, no, I wasn't going to rock the boat. I mean, she doesn't want to participate, that's fine, we'll go on. So, am I done?
Yes.
I'm going to give you these.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything else from the committee on the trap neuter return?
No.
This is just, I don't look for that.
Open projects, any to discuss?
No.
Okie doke, public participation?
Thank you.
Seeing no one, we will end the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 7:01 PM, June 20th, 2024.
Regular plating committee at 7:02. Public particip, oh, wait a minute. I still have to do this announcement, right?
Do the people first.
Huh?
Who's here? People who are here, and then the announcement.
Aaron Schirr, Carolyn Sherman, Vicki DeShawn, James Meachair. So now I do the announcement?
All right. I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined by the Bussiris City Council Rules of Procedure Section B entitled Council Participation Pertaining to the Subsection 8, being that the agenda and the package council meeting must be posted to documents on demand at least 24 hours prior to this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes. Yes.
Carolyn? I'm a yes. You're throwing us curveballs today.
I know.
Uh...
Oh, I need to say yes, too.
Would you like to say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. The rules of the Bussiris City procedures are being suspended as listed above due to a clerical error. The clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20th, 2024 committee packet to documents on demand 24 hours in advance for the regularly scheduled committee meeting. This procedure is being done to ensure transparency of all the errors and to continue with meeting as scheduled. Okay, public participation.
Thomas Donner Service Agent Director, as of Monday, we're going to start the Mill and Pavement for 2024, just to let everyone know. I wish I had the list on me, I do not, I apologize for that, Bruce just reminded me.
Can you publish it on the city's Facebook page?
Yes, we'll get that.
What days were expected to be where?
I don't know if they'll go, I don't know, I can try to find out that information. I don't, I don't know if they have a timeline of what days where they're going to be, but I'll, I'll try to find that out.
Is Dudley Street done?
What's that?
Is Dudley done?
Dudley is, no. Yeah, I better not.
Work on it.
Yeah, it's not done.
All right, cool. Approval of the minutes for the June 6, 2024 regular plating meeting, any motion, please, pass?
Mr. Chair, I have a change.
Uh-oh.
I didn't catch this when I looked them over, when Miranda gave them to me. Page two, where it says 216-320 East Woodlawn, I know 216 was said, but it's actually 316. So what you really do is, after the 216, because that's what was said at the meeting, is you put in parenthesis, and then you put in the numbers 316, and then the letters SIC, which means this is...
What was meant?
Right.
What?
What we meant.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion as amended to approve the minutes from June 6, 2024 regular plating committee meeting.
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Changes to the BCO 1189.03, general surfacing requirements. We've got a copy here. We wanted to change to the downtown business district. Everybody's looked at that?
Did you do a revised draft, piece of legislation?
I came in this afternoon.
So...
You have the one.
I have the one that was on the documents on demand?
Yes. I don't know if it was on documents on demand, but...
Miranda sent you that?
Oh.
This was laying here.
Miranda left these for us.
Yeah. So under B, it says location in the downtown business district, and that was a change that we wanted.
All right. Oh, yeah. Yes. Okay. Yes, I'm fine with it, yes.
Chair? Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, looks good.
And do we maybe want to, just for the public, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Please.
I need to be recognized.
Please, this is committee.
No. Do we want to state what the changes are, just for the public to know, that surfacing for all off-street parking and loading areas in the downtown business district, except for parking areas serving single-family residential uses, shall be properly graded, drained, marked, and surfaced, so as to provide a hard, durable, and dustless surface constructed using asphalt, concrete, cement, or other similar material approved by the engineering department? That's for downtown business. Then, all off-street parking and loading areas in all other zoning districts, except for parking areas serving single-family residential uses, shall comply with the surfacing requirements found here in, unless a variance is granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So downtown businesses, the engineering department controls the surfacing, there is no BZA.
Not in the downtown district.
Exactly. And then others, the BZA, they can go to for a variance. Great, yes, I'm fine with that.
Aaron, you good with this? I'm asking again.
I still said BZA, so I'm fine.
Okay. All right, we're good, so we can move this on to full council. Give it a number.
To have amendments made to it, so I suppose you guys approve the legislation as presented to send to full council?
Yes.
Which was what you were going, I was just...
Okay. Do we have to have a vote on that?
Yes.
Full council?
Yes, please.
So I have a motion to...
Mr. Me?
Yes.
I don't know if we already get the chance to read that yet, but I was thinking, single-family dwellings, I think in zoning, single-family dwellings that are just family dwellings is four units and down, so we need to have that state, maybe that change from single unit, single-family units to any property that's four units and down as part of that, or not? Oh, Chris Maritz, 226 Plumb Street, sorry. Just because I want to make sure that we don't, you know, step on anybody's toes or down lines.
So it says, says, single-family dwellings.
Right.
And I have to look at the definition, I know what you're saying. In the definition section, single-family dwelling may be four units or less.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know...
So I think plausibly, this committee could pass this and ask for it, and I'll have an answer to that question, what's defined as a single-family dwelling, on Tuesday when we come back.
I agree.
And if it's not defined, we could either A, define it somewhere, or B, in that actual section, just, you know, a single-family dwelling as defined by a dwelling that four households, or four units or less, something like that. But I think it might be, because we were talking about that with...
Zonings.
Yeah, and then property maintenance, it's defined somewhere.
That's where, that's where I heard it.
Right.
From then, then, just clicked in my head when I think I was going through it.
So is it all right to pass this on to full council? Then we can look at the full council, look at the whole thing anyway?
I have an answer. Or we could table it, and I could bring it.
My thought is, I mean, table it, let him come, let the law director...
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to have it ready to go when it leaves here.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I mean, it's gone this long.
All right, we'll table it.
Yeah.
Way to go.
So moved.
Amendment to the codified ordinance to include ponds. Went through that. And so how does the committee feel about leaving fencing up to the BZA? And so the size of the pond is relative to the property. So if you've got two acres, can we limit the size to a half acre? See what I'm saying? You got to have at least two acres in town, and your pond has to be so big.
I'm wondering, Mr. Me, before we do a little discussion, if we might want to have Mr. Diver come up? I had provided him with a copy of this draft.
Come on up.
And get his comments to it, and then we can, as a committee, then discuss, if that's okay?
Yeah.
With the committee?
Here, Diver, 1928 Harriet Road. I was up here a few weeks ago and talked to you about having interest in putting a pond in at my residence. I am on about an acre point eight five. I'm on the south edge of Bussiris on Route 4. I'm kind of out there by myself, there's plenty of room to put one. There's really nobody around me that would really be affected by it, having one there. I read the draft ordinance here that the law director wrote up here, and it does mention fencing, but in my case, with not hardly anybody around, I don't think in my case it's of importance. The lighting part of it, I can do that easy enough. Private property signs, I can put that up easy enough. But the fencing, if you've ever seen a pond with fencing around it, it isn't very, it don't look very good. And I guess if it comes to put fencing up, I'm probably not interested in doing it for that reason. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
What kind of sign are we talking about? What kind of sign are we talking about?
Yeah, I think you... So what I think, I took what we had for pools in Bussaras and just applied it to ponds. So I think you have to have, Mr. Sean has it, but I think you have to have a sign. Private property.
Private property signs.
And no trespassing?
No trespassing signs.
Why wouldn't that work?
There's a possible, like, possibility, I can put cameras out there and hook it up to my phone, so I could be watching it all the time.
I think signs would be a...
Lighting, I could put solar lights up to light it up somewhat, and...
Wouldn't he be protected by the signs? If anybody comes on his property and they say, "No trespassing," in private property?
Well, so... So you're saying if somebody comes on his property and is injured in his pond, could somebody sue the city and/or Mr. Diver?
No, they shouldn't be able to, because he had the... They were where they shouldn't be. The signs tell them, they can't, they can't be there.
Yeah, I mean...
It's an iffy, iffy thing, but if he's out where he's at and there's nobody around, I would think that the signs would be sufficient.
Could be. I know Mr. Me talked about having that, something with BZA, being able to vary, because yes, being the last property in the city of Bussaras, out on State Route 4, out by yourself, is different than me wanting to put a pond in my backyard, three blocks away from the local school where kids walk home, you know? So in that circumstance, I could see making me have a fence, because it's a high-traffic area.
Right.
As opposed to, but, but rather than trying to spell out who has to have a fence in what district, have that be something that the Board of Zoning Appeals could utilize, those sort of common sense criteria to make those determinations.
I know when we first talked about the pond, Mr. Hill, who was our interim zoning administrator, had provided the committee with his thoughts on the matter. And his last comment was, "If council is interested in allowing ponds as a residential accessory use, addition of language to Chapter 1187, entitled Additional Residential District Standards, could be appropriate, as it can cover all residential zoning districts. If desired, the new accessory use could be added as a conditional use, making it subject to approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Then, any requirements the Plating Committee would like to see or any recommended through the public hearing process could be added to the language for BZA to consider in making its decision. And examples of potential requirements to consider would be the minimum lot size, the size of the pond, the potential fencing, or access control requirements." But I think that's basically what you're saying is, and I mean, my thought... And I've been out to Mr. Diver's home. Personally, I see no reason where he's at on the end of town for a fence. But if somebody next door to me was able to put a fence in, just because of the children in the area, and... So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm fine with the pond, but I want to be able to shove it off on the BZA to be the ones to make the final determination. In other words, it's a base by, or case by case.
And I am fine with that, but thank you, Vicki. No, really, I mean, it adds value, Internet says that, excuse, Internet says it adds between 10% and 15% value to your property and other properties around you. And like I mentioned before, it'd be accessible for fire protection if anybody would need it. And we know there's some, there's a church out there, not too far away, in the self-storage units, and it could come in, it could come in handy. Lord forbid.
Mr. Sean? Yes. So are you saying... Wait a minute, I'm not the chairperson. I know. Oh, okay. Yeah, he, yeah. So from what you just said, so if we all decide, or if we say, yeah, just signs would be appropriate for, for him to put out there, then that recommendation from council would help with the BZA to make their decision? No? Oh, I thought...
I think what Mr. DeShawn was saying is, or from what Landon was saying, that you could allow ponds conditioned upon approval by the BZA, and then the BZA would come up with, based upon a case-by-case analysis, the restrictions. So you could set the baseline and say, "All ponds approved, regardless of whatever, but all ponds have to meet these certain thresholds. You have to have at least one acre of land, you have to have at least, the pond has to be at least half of an acre, or whatever, I don't know." But, and it has to have signs. If the BZA wants to approve other ones and make additional restrictions on a case-by-case basis, A, they have to approve the pond, and if every pond they approve has to have this, plus whatever else the BZA thinks would be appropriate, based upon the traffic, the site, and those types of things. That's what...
I mean, if, if somebody is out close to rentals and they have kids and things, I definitely wouldn't want a pond around there, you know? And if you had five acres, I definitely wouldn't want a pond out there. But, you know, I would think it'd be all subject to circumstance and so on and so forth.
But I do believe that if we go forward with this, one of our restrictions, we want a fence. We want to say a fence needs to be put. But then that's when you would go to the BZA and ask for a variance and say, hey, this is where I am located, take a look at where my pond, you know, I would like to have my pond, and here's why I feel I don't need, you know, a fence. That's not to say that they're going to say, oh, sure, you don't need a fence. You know, it's like you and I talked about. I mean, I would rather go and ask for a variance and have them deny it than not ask for a variance and find out they would have given it to you.
In a way, it'd say, "Me $22,000."
Right.
You know, I mean, that's how much one's going to cost.
Yeah.
But that's not what I want, I want a pond.
I think, and I don't have that, but I think probably it's worth me going back and talking to the new zoning director and making sure all of the variance language, the conditional use language, and all of that lines up, and then bring that back.
I did talk to him today, and he was going to get with one of his coworkers at another city, and he was, they have a pond ordinance there, and he was going to get me a copy of that. But of course, today wasn't the time, but...
Right.
So let's just table this until we see that.
Does that sound okay with you, Mr. Diver?
Sounds fine with me.
Okay.
That way we can get it right.
Yep. Any more questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Diver.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So we have 316 and 320 wood lawn. Did you get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Conditional structure on the side of the church.
So currently, a secondary accessory structure is not permitted to be on that property based upon the zoning regulations. He wants to build a standalone secondary property with someday maybe connected to the main structure. According to our zoning code, that would not be a permitted use. Now, I was talking to Landon about this, and now we have Mr. Mike, I forget what his last name is, but as our new zoning administrator. So that may be something that him and I would have to tackle and then bring recommendations.
Okay, cool. 502 Gay Street sidewalk repair. Everybody's familiar with that, you've seen the pictures, and we had a catastrophe. Come on up, buddy.
I'd ask to refer the whole section, Kevin Myers, 421, most openly, to ask you guys to consider changing that. I think it was updated, what, 1964? Let the administration handle that. It doesn't, you know, need to come before council for that, I don't think.
Well, we had a catastrophe, we had a tornado come through town.
Sure, I understand, I understand that. But then, how many other sidewalks are there in town that are problematic because of trees or whatever? And I think we're setting a really, really tough precedent if we go and fix that one.
Yeah.
You're going to have every property owner has a faulty sidewalk in here asking to have it fixed. But I think more importantly, I don't know that, my opinion is, I think it belongs to the administration's decision, not the council's decision.
Committee?
Isn't it that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house?
Yes.
And that's what, the code that you've provided...
Yeah, so...
Talks about the city would, if council voted, the city would send them a letter, indicate that their sidewalk is in disrepair and needs repaired, and give them 270 days to make that repair. If they don't make that repair within 270 days, the city has the right then to make that repair and assess it to you.
I, I, I think the property owner should fix it.
In this case, we had a tree blow over because we had a tornado come through, and it lifted up the sidewalk.
Right, but if the bear wasn't across the road...
And you're correct.
So, I mean, if you...
It's the property owner.
And I can't believe I'm going to agree, Mr. Kevin Myers here. This is just, this is history.
You're absolutely correct.
This is history right here. I, I mean, seriously, I, I agree with Kevin. If you do it for one, and it's going to spread like wildfire, you know, oh, they fixed it for me, then the next one is going to want you to fix it, and they're going to use the first one as an example. Explain how you're going to get out of that. You're not.
Okay.
Well, I'm reading Mr. Starner's letter here, and what it says is, "We are in, we are requesting council investigate the condition of the, the condition of the sidewalk to decide whether the property shall be required to make the necessary repairs to alleviate any safety concerns for pedestrian traffic." So I'm not taking...
That was my part, that I don't think we should be involved in that.
Well, but, but I mean, he isn't asking that the city take care of paying for this. He's just asking for us to say whether we feel this property, and I wonder if it should be property owner, shall be required to make the necessary...
Yeah, I misread it.
Repairs.
And that was my opinion, that we shouldn't be making that decision.
Well...
They should make that on their own. I mean, we don't, I'm sorry for speaking over you. We don't, we don't tell Mr. Burner on a case-by-case basis when it's in Gordon Grove out and when not to, you know? Why is, why is the sidewalk being in disrepair any different than somebody's house being in disrepair?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I looked up some of the codified ordinance sections that were referred to in our Bussaras codified ordinance sections. And I should say, I looked at some of the Ohio Revised Code sections. If I didn't say that, that's what I meant to say. That are referred to in our Bussaras codified ordinance sections. And it talks about, "When it is deemed necessary by a municipal corporation to require the construction or repair of sidewalks, each municipal corporation shall have special power to..." Well, this is to levy and collect special assessments to do with sidewalks. And in addition to the power conferred upon municipal corporations to construct... Well, I guess that's to construct sidewalk curbs or gutters. I guess what I'm wondering is, is council referred to in our Bussaras codified ordinances because the Ohio Revised Code is saying that it's a legislative? It says, "The legislative authority of the municipal corporation shall cause plan specifications and an estimate of the cost of such repair to be prepared."
I think that would be more like, we're talking about how, like, going out Marion Road to McDonald's, there's no sidewalks. And if we said, well, we want sidewalks in there, we could, we could pay to put it in there and assess each one of those properties taxes. I think that's where we have that authority. But in this instance, why, why is it up to us? We're not property maintenance people. What makes, you know, I don't have the training to say, well, that sidewalk definitely needs to be fixed, versus, ah, we can let that one slide, it's, it's okay.
So this really isn't ours?
Currently, it is.
Yeah.
Currently, it is.
I don't know if it should be, but currently, if you, in the city of Bussaras, there are sidewalks in disrepair, upon decision by the resolution of council, the clerk shall cause a written notice of the resolution to be served upon the owner. You guys.
We got a lot of work to do. There are a lot of sidewalks. Mr. Sean?
Mr. Burner?
Is, I know... Does the property owner have insurance that would cover something like that?
I mean, I think that if a tree fell over in a storm and uprooted my sidewalk, that would be covered under my insurance, but...
Okay, so then, so what we're trying to figure out is, was this an act of God? Or was it the sidewalk just decided to pop up? I don't, I don't think we should, I don't know. That's an iffy thing.
Yeah.
But I still think this should be your lap and not ours, I agree.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, Myers. I could see, based upon the fact that you're almost levying a tax on some of these assessments for group projects, sort of like a ditch project out in the county, right? We're collecting money from a large group to run a sidewalk. I assume back in 1964 when they passed this, because that was similar in, whatever, to a tax, or taxing the citizens, which has to come from this body. Maybe that's why this body had to send you notices back in the day. I don't know. But it would be worth me spending time reading what Miss DeShawn, Mrs. DeShawn highlighted. And then, if you guys want to cut that out and have it come straight from the administration, property maintenance, service safety director, those types of people, I mean, that's not too hard to fix that.
We just take that to the administration? Yes?
Another super question. Was the city awarded money for the tornado?
I don't think so.
I thought we was, we're not award, I thought the line...
I think that, like, there are funds through FEMA, but those, I think, are individual applications. So Bussaras was declared a disaster, whatever, to get the FEMA money, but that's not coming to the city to administer or to keep. That's going to individual homeowners that have...
So, right, that, and my question is, if we, if that was coming, if we were getting that, I don't know where I read that at, but why wouldn't that cover the man's sidewalk?
Yeah, and I don't know, I'm not sure.
That would be the fix for it all, right there.
Yeah, I don't know what the guidelines on what you can do.
Yeah, so I, I heard that somewhere, so I don't know.
I just, I have not been notified of the city receiving any kind of money directly for any of the storm damage.
Okay.
Yes?
So the letter that we've received from Mr. Starner were saying that that's something that we don't feel we need or want to deal with? I mean, I mean, right now, we have an ordinance that says, or codified ordinance section, that says, "Upon decision by resolution of council, that certain specified sidewalks shall be constructed or repaired, and the clerk shall cause a written notice of the passage of such resolution." In other words, if, if, is this saying that if we feel that 502 needs to repair their sidewalk, then we need to have a resolution that says 502 needs to repair their sidewalk? And so I guess the question is, are... And so I guess the question is, are we looking to change Chapter 905? And if we are, don't we really need to change this first before we restart?
Exactly what I was saying.
Okay.
Yeah, that was...
Next to the list.
The roundabout way to get him to move, yes.
Would you like to make a motion to do that?
I would love to make a motion to do that.
Go for it.
And, and what's your motion?
Uh, to, to change 905 such that it is looked at in the same way as any of the other, the sidewalk changes need to be looked at in the same way as the property maintenance.
Okay, I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Now, I'm wondering, in the meantime, because if you looked at those pictures...
It was really, really bad, it's a lot better than it was, but it's not good.
I mean...
It, it actually was standing straight up and down.
I mean, what scares me is, if the city goes out and, like, ropes it off, are we making ourselves liable? I, I mean, I, it's, has anything been done as far as rope off, so no one at nighttime's walking and go stripping over that?
So we can talk to Mr. Dunn and make those...
Okay.
We're good, I mean, we're just as liable now, knowing about it and ignoring it.
Gotcha, okay.
So I got a question. Did, did the city remove the tree that fell over and pulled the sidewalk up?
I think we did, yeah. Ah, they can't, don't quote me, I don't know.
Did the city do what?
Did the city remove the tree that fell over and the stump?
Are you saying it caused the damage?
I'm saying it didn't help it.
Well, it says the service garage assisted with the removal of the uprooted stump.
I, I can honestly say, my bus goes through there every day. That was literally standing, there was a huge hole. It, it, I, when I say it's a whole lot better than it was, I'm not kidding. Like, it's still there.
You're saying after they removed the tree, it was standing straight up?
Well, the, it was, the sidewalk itself was standing up, but, but I don't know if the homeowner cut it up, I just know, I know the city removed what was there, but several of different houses down the street had, were chopping all of that up and just setting it on the curb as the city came through and got it.
Okay. All right, well, I won't...
It was a mixture.
Okay. All right, return 905 over to administration, I guess.
No, we're not turning 905 over to the administration. Is that what you said?
Something like that, yeah.
We want to turn 905, do we want to have the law director prepare a draft?
We might, law director, prepare that draft for us of making it so that it's under property maintenance to have that checked into.
We're turning over to the administration, the letter, or turning back, or...
I think that, Mr. Me was saying is...
Of course, I guess we want to have a legislation.
We want to create legislation which would not require city council to send those letters, but require the private property maintenance division to send those letters, so that you guys aren't going on a case-by-case trying to determine which, whatever. And then, after that, well, I guess we approach...
Okay.
5902, 502, whatever it is.
That's what I know.
Yeah.
I got you. So what?
But have Mr. Dunn figure out if there's any...
And in the meantime, we're going to put up some barrels or something. The city got their fire, besides fire department, block gates back, so we can use those.
So now we're back to open projects?
I have nothing.
Public participation. Seeing none? Adjourn at?
7:41.
7:41.
Finance Committee, Thursday, June 6, 2024.
Call the Finance Committee to order at 7:43 PM. Members present are James Me, Christopher Moritz, Vicky DeShawn, Kevin Myers, Chair. I need a motion to suspend the rules outlined in Bussaras City Council Rules and Procedures, Section B entitled, "Council Participation Retaining to Subsection 8 Being that the Agenda and packets for council and committee meetings must be posted to documents on demand at least 24 hours prior to any meeting." I make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, a second by Mr. Me, and we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. The rules of the Bussaras City Council Rules and Procedure are being suspended as listed above due to a clerical error. The clerk of council unintentionally failed to publish the June 20th, 2024 committee packets to documents on demand 24 hours in advance of the regularly scheduled committee meetings. This procedure is being done to ensure transparency of the error and to continue with the meeting as scheduled. Moving on, you have in front of you the minutes from June 6, 2024. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Me, second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Purchase of the slide, I think that was nothing to talk about at this point. Same thing for the sidewalk repair on Gay Street. Is there any open projects that anybody wishes to discuss?
Nope.
No.
All right. Public participation. Seeing nobody jumping out of their chairs, we're gonna adjourn at 7:44 PM.